The special called meeting of the Craven County Board of Education is called to order. I would like to call Mr. Rick Stout to please do a roll call, please.
Yes, I'm Mr. Kenneth Stoudt.
Present.
Amy Davis.
Present.
Earl Lynn Gibbs.
Present.
Lisa Burton.
Present.
Lauren Kintzinger.
Present.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Present.
Ms. Lori Speace.
Present. Presentation of the 2025-2026 Local Expense Budget and the Capital Outlay Budget.
Good evening, Board. So we will, it's a lot of the same that you've seen before, so we'll go through some of this relatively quickly, but please stop me and ask any questions as we go. The first slide, if you could go to that, please. Their current budget year considerations, that slide is exactly the same and has not changed any. The next chart, you've seen before, that was ADM showing the 11,838 students for our planning allotment for 25-26. The next slide has not changed, the 25-26 State Planning Allotments. The next chart, Additional Revenue Adjustments, I did make one small change on this chart. I showed the county appropriation that the Board is requesting is to 2.2 million. And then I did a breakdown of what that county appropriation increase shows. We've talked about this before, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody, this was clear to everybody, that it's the fixed costs in the charter school increases. So it's the 1.1 million in fixed costs, the 798,000 due to the Riverside Leadership Academy increase enrollment, and then the 292,000, which is the projected increase that we're thinking we're going to see next year for the grade added at Riverside and any other charter school enrollment increases. And that's approximately 150 students, that are our current rate of pay. The next charts are the ones you've seen before. This just gives the breakdown of the line items in the budget, in the local expense budget. The last year's budget numbers, this year's budget numbers, increase amounts and position reductions or increases. If you go to the last chart of this one, it shows that we're reducing from last year's current expense budget of the $33 million to this year, we're reducing 1.5 million. The next chart, go back one chart, please, Tony, the other way, right here. We did add to this chart, this was the history of the county appropriation and what they've appropriated for the district since 2014-15, but we added the ADM numbers and showed those ADM numbers per year and the amount of change in the ADM numbers. That's the last column, percent change in ADM. The percent change in the fourth column is the percent change in the county appropriation. But again, same chart you've seen before, just adding the ADM numbers per year. So the next chart is the local current revenues, and this shows for 25-26, we're asking the county appropriation from the county to be 25,000,546,954. Funds and forfeitures are staying constant at 600,000. Late filing fees are staying constant at 50,000. There's no other local revenues that we will realize this year. The fund balance appropriation will be 5.5 million to balance the budget. And on the next column, you see increases, decreases only from the 24-25 budget. So the 23 going to 25 is the 2.2 million dollar increase. 600 to 600,000, 50 to 50,000, 4687, there's a decrease of 4,687 dollars. The fund balance appropriation last year was 9.3 million, this year 5.5. So a decrease in the appropriation of 3.8 and the budget reduction of 1.5 million. And if you see the very far column to the right, that's the fund balance that's remaining after the allocation is made to balance the budget. The next chart was added. This just gives a breakdown of the Esser 24-25 funding summary. And just a point of clarity, the Esser money is gone. But basically what we did strategically in the budget was we wanted to capture PRC codes in the local budget to show what we used the money from Esser previously from. So when we say Esser funding, it's not Esser funding as part of the local budget. It's just a strategic way to track that, to make sure that we knew what we kept in the budget due to Esser and what we would be potentially removing this budget year. So that's a summary of what the Esser funding was. If you remember originally in some of the earlier presentations, the 25-26 budget number was zero, but you see it now being the 527 number. That's because the nurses and the social workers were put back in the budget, back into the local budget. The next chart, you've seen, that was the amount, go back one time. That's the amount that was needed to fund the social workers and the additional nurses, and that money has been put back into the budget. The next chart shows some of the funding adjustments we made to maintain the social workers and the nurses. So we had money in for facility support vehicle maintenance. We took that down by 50%. We have older vehicles in their break, so we had some maintenance dollars in there, but we took half of that away. The adminum contingency elimination was 300,000, and we kept money in for adminum. Adminum's going to be paid from textbook money, but you basically don't have any room in textbook to add any enrollment to the virtual academy. So if there is enrollment increases, the adminum, we don't have it, we didn't have any way to pay for that. So you're basically, you're almost capping your virtual academy enrollment because there won't be any money to pay for any additional students because we won't have money to pay for the adminum. And hopefully that makes sense. Let's talk elimination, we think we can do that. Ms. Wagner's looking at different ways to solicit public input on our website. We had $50,000 in for district athletic field support. We cut that in half to 25,000. We basically kept money in at a district level to sort of get the schools started in the athletic season. They need money to top fill their fields and some of the stuff, and they wouldn't necessarily have the funds available, so we sort of seed money in there for them, and we'll have a little bit to help them out. But these total reductions are 392,530,000. The next chart was a question, just some of the things that were in non-instructional support, clerical support, data managers, and technology specialists. That's not everything, but these were some of the higher budgeted items in non-instructional support. Moving on to capital outlay, this has not changed any. Still the same requests that we've made, the 1,052 for what we consider working capital, and then the 1.1 million for the device lease with Apple, for a total ask of 2.1 million. This is an increase of 51,000 over last year, and it came, the breaker replacement, Graeme A. Barton was a late add. We were not anticipating that one, but we need to get that changed over the summer. So it would have been a $9,000 increase, but now it's the 51, and most of that's to Graeme A. Barton breaker. And I know that was very, very, very fast, but in other restricted funds, hasn't changed any because we haven't received any revenue updates in those restricted funds yet. So what questions do you have?
Any questions from the Board? I would just want to point out that in this version of the budget, there is a nurse at every school. Our four social workers are in this budget. All of our guidance counselors are in this budget, and our school psychologists are in this budget. And every school continues to have a school resource officer.
And Ms. Speace, if I could add, assistant principals are kept hold as well.
Yes.
Assistant principals are still in the budget.
Yes, and assistant principals.
So all the APs are in there?
Yes, ma'am.
What about enhancement teachers?
They're all in there.
What we need or what we currently have?
I will defer this one to Mrs. Lee.
Yes, Mrs. Lee.
Never what we need, probably. When we were given the reduced allotment this year because our ADM was decreased, we had 564 and a half positions that were allotted for. We have 498 of those positions are regular classroom teacher positions. We have a need for 55 enhancement teachers, no, I'm sorry, 71 enhancement teachers. 55 of them are in the state allotted budget, and then 16 of them are being paid by school funds, by principals when they get their Title I or their restart money, and they're able to work with their school improvement team to have some autonomy on what they want to keep and what they might not be able to afford. So 16 positions are there, and so, and we had one additional school that was going, we had two elementary schools that were down to only one enhancement teacher, a PE teacher at each school, because this is the small amount of numbers of kids in those schools. So we did use an extra position so those two schools could have two enhancements, so they have at least what everybody else in the county has and aren't penalized because of a small enrollment in the school. So currently, all, I mean, of course, there are some positions that we felt like we had to try to stay within our, in order to stay in our allotted number. We addressed that through class size increase in some of the upper grades, and then we were able to manage those positions for our teachers because according to the state allotment, we only are qualified for 28 enhancement positions, and we had a need for 71-ish. Does that answer your question?
And the money's coming from where again?
Well, 498 plus 55 of it is coming from state allotment money. They're state allotted positions. 16 of them are coming from either Title I or restart funding the schools have. And then one is coming, we've got one position that we're going to put back into the state allotment. We have about, how many? I think we have six and a half positions we haven't allotted yet. So we're six and a half to the good, so we have six and a half positions. So of those six and a half, we'll take one of them so that those two schools, elementary schools, will have at least two resource teachers, and that'll leave us with five and a half in case, like, for example, we already know that Oaks Road Academy has more kindergartners enrolled this year than they had last year altogether. So we know that school's going to have to have another kindergarten teacher. So we have about four and a half positions that we can play with and not go over budget, which is what our goal was.
Yes, Ms. Stacy.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Lee, yes, Mr. Lee, please. Okay, so I think the last time we were here, we looked a little bit at the non-instructional support, and we talked about that briefly, but I know that is decreased by 282,000. So can you speak to that? That means a reduced number of positions. And in talking to our staff, I'm trying to understand exactly how that's going to work because a lot of these folks are data managers, bookkeepers, right? And so a lot of them are already wearing multiple hats, so is that what's happening? Are we going to have more responsibilities on fewer people? I'm guessing, at the school level, that's what that means. Like a person who's doing the data for all of their students at their school, plus they're trying to answer 80 phone calls a day.
There could be some combining of roles, yes, ma'am, to get to that. But we're hoping, you know, through attrition and retirements and things like that, it won't have any direct impact on anybody working, but there'll have to be some combining of roles and responsibilities at the school potentially. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With regard to fund balance, I know you've explained that you anticipate with this budget there would be less than 3 million remaining in fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. Can you remind me back at the height of COVID, what was the height of the fund balance? Was it at 17 million at one point?
17 million went to 12, went to three, so it's been steadily decreasing. I think the height, Ms. Stacy, was around 17,000. I can get you the exact number, but that's what I remember.
That's fine. For the benefit of the public, though, can you describe generally how the fund balance accumulates over time?
It does. There's two parts to it. There's the unassigned piece, the Fund II piece, which basically means anything that you don't, I'll make it a little bit more simple than it is, but anything that you do not spend in your local appropriation goes back into the fund balance, which we anticipate to do this year. Every year we've done that. That's really sound budgeting because if you're cutting it too close, you need some play in that, so that goes back into the fund balance. And then you have the restricted piece, the Fund VIII piece, which is where some of the revenues and other things come into play. That one you have to be a little bit more careful with because some of those funds are dedicated to certain things, but you do have some flexibility in that fund as well. But it's really any surplus that you have, mainly in the local expense budget, goes back into the unassigned fund balance.
Right, of course, we have to be careful about overspending in a particular line item as well, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, with regard to athletics in this budget, is the athletic trainer contract still in it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, that was put back in. After conversation with Superintendent Stout, we know that we have a plan next year to drive the athletic training responsibility to the schools, but there's a little bit of nervousness in whether that plan is going to work or not. So we kept the money in, the 226,000, that's still in the budget as a just in case because the liability in that space is tremendous, and if we're not covered the way we need to be covered, then we could have a lot of issues. So that's the reason that we kept that money in. We originally had contemplated taking that out, but it's back in.
Okay. So I just want to contrast where we're cutting and where we're not cutting. So we've put back in the athletic trainer contract, which basically funded, if I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Matt can, I know, answer this, that funded essentially three athletic trainers.
That's correct.
So it's a pretty pricey contract. If we were to train our own folks, I assume there would be a timeline for doing that, correct? And some costs associated with that as well? Okay. The budget also does not include funding for the district athletic director, correct?
It's still in there.
It's still in here?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, interesting, okay, all right, didn't know that. All right, but we're still cutting all professional development?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In the local budget, yes, ma'am.
Right, is there professional development elsewhere?
There is some in the state, but it would be limited, probably, so most of it would have been in the local budget.
Right, no, I know it was zeroed out here, okay. All right, that's all I have for right now.
Any other questions? Ms. Mason?
Okay, I ask this every time. So we have a dependency of 5.1 on the fund balance, and we've been watching it come down. And every year we anticipate it's not going to be as bad, and we're watching our fund balance go broke. What are we using it for? Do we know what is causing us to have to dip into savings every year?
I mean, the easiest, that's a hard answer, Ms. Mason, because basically what you do is you use the fund balance to balance your budget. So it goes into your local budget and just becomes part of your budget. So I mean, it's not earmarked necessarily to pay this item, that item, or whatever. It's part of the budget balancing. So a good way to look at it is this year, we basically through April have spent our county appropriation. So you're funding the last two months of the year with the fund balance. I don't know if that's a more, if that's an easier way to look at it or not, but you don't line item the fund balance, you don't say...
I understand that, but there ought to be a category of things I'm buying from it that is causing us because in November, the auditor told us to quit using the fund balance. And what are we going to do next year when we effectively have no fund balance left? What are we going to do for next year?
I mean, there's only two parts to the revenue. You would have to decrease the expense requirement even more than it is now, or you, the county appropriation would have to increase. So those are the two things that would have to happen to...
Madam Chair.
To release.
Yes, Mr. Gatchel.
This is a special called BD. It is specifically about this year's budget.
The budget.
The next year's budget does not fall within the notice.
Point of order, I would disagree because if I buy down this year's budget so much that I can't afford next year, it does apply.
Point of order, back, we're going to go back to, we have the explanation for the fund balance for the current year budget, and that, so. Are there any other, Mr. Kirkman, did you have anything? Yes, Ms. Stacy?
Okay, so I want to go back for a moment to nurses and social workers, and I know we had a vote on this at our last meeting that I think was pretty clear that the Board's desire is to keep a nurse in every school. With that said, I want to, in the interest of transparency, if you wouldn't mind, if Ms. Matt could come up and talk briefly about how that's been done. I know we've been paying nurses out of several different PRC codes, and this year, I believe, 17 nurses this year that are Craven County Schools nurses, am I correct? Right, and we had a contract with Emerges for up to 10, but we didn't utilize all 10. And so we're essentially cutting the amount of that contract in this fiscal year budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's where the reduction is, and it's, of course, fitting to discuss this at School Nurse Day, according to Governor Stein. So at the end of the day, there are fewer contract nurses, and a CCS nurse is less expensive than a contract nurse, we know that too. And obviously, we want to save all the money that we can, but I would like for her, if you don't mind, Nurse Mac, if she could speak to exactly where they are. So I want people to be clear about where the nurses are because when we say a nurse in every school, we do have a nurse in every school, but there are some that cover the early colleges too. Right, and I just want to be very clear about what that means.
Yeah, so currently, we have 17 Craven County School nurses. We have seven contract nurses. Last year, the Board approved the contract nurses not to exceed 650,875 dollars. So when we broke that down, we could afford up to about 10 nurses. What I have done over the course of this year is I received permission from Emerges. So there's two contracts with Emerges. There's the contract for Craven County Schools, and then there's a contract with the nurse that's employed. They have an employee contract. So what we did is I reached out to their business partner with us, and they held us harmless. So they did not penalize our school system for allowing us to move some of the contract nurses to apply for vacant Craven County positions, which was a cost savings for this district. The cost savings year to date is going to be, when we moved, we had 10, and we now have seven. That cost savings is 210,000 dollars. So if you look at the hourly rate of a contract nurse versus a Craven County nurse, you, there's a difference of about, about $35,000 per nurse, which is a cost saving. So right now...
Right, because it's not, we're not having to pay retirement and health benefits, so it's not a fully loaded, as we would say, fully loaded employee cost.
So right now, we will have spent year to date 592,475 dollars of the approved 635,000. So we will have a difference of about 58,400 dollars. The way we have been able to do that is for our elementary schools, the nurse works, is on a 35-hour-a-week schedule. For our high schools, it's 37 and a half hours. And with our contract nurses, I've worked very closely to, they do not work our optional workdays during the middle of the year. I've managed their time sheets very, very closely. So that is where we've had a cost savings within that contract.
Right, and I did also have somebody ask me, do we have, because of course nurses get sick like everybody else, do we have some, we do have a substitute, do we have a substitute nurse as well?
I have one, I have one sub nurse who was a retired Craven nurse.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question about the social workers. Are they under a contract, will they be contracted, or will they be permanent?
They're fully, they're fully employed.
So our school social workers are certified through the Department of Public Instruction, and they are a Craven County school employee. They are not contracted.
So will be responsible for benefits and retirement?
Yes, ma'am.
And we had to plan on not renewing contracts in order to fund the social workers? So some teachers will not be returning in order to fund that? That's not part of it?
Originally, with our social workers, when we brought our social workers on board, we had, we were funded for six positions. Then we lost one who moved out of the area, and then we filled that other position, and then we had one retire at the end of February, and that position was not filled. So we have four Craven County School social workers.
And so they're not trained by the county, they didn't come from the county?
No, no, they are specifically certified through... They are specifically certified through the Department of Public Instruction as a school social worker. So they had to take some coursework to get their certification. And when they're hired, they had, they're given a provisional license. And then they have coursework, a certain number of hours they must take to be certified as a school nurse. So they are, it is completely different than, I'm sorry, my brain's bad, than the social, than a, like a DSS social worker.
And where will they be housed?
They have lots of schools. What I have done is I have based them out of our middle schools. And then I've aligned them with the elementary schools that feed in to the middle school. So that usually, if there's an issue in one school with a student, there's usually something going on with the family. So I want that family to be with just one point of contact of a social worker. But right now, because we have four, I mean, I do have a social worker right now who has eight schools. So they're working pretty hard.
I was just wondering if they'll be responsible for the same duties as teachers or teacher assistants in the school day?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. They're certified for very specific criteria within their role. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing nothing else. Did you have something, Ms. Kitzinger?
Most of my questions have already been answered. I just have comments, I think. Mostly, thank you for getting this budget to us. It has everything that we asked for. Brian, so sorry, sir. But I do think next year's budget has something to do with this budget. And just like this year's budget has something to do with last year's budget. Get away from the mic. Last year, we did try to make some cuts to make this year a little bit easier. But we just didn't have enough votes for that. So next year is gonna be a little bit more painful, I think, than this year was. And this year was pretty painful for us.
Madam Chair.
No, I'm done. But I just wanted to say that. So not looking forward to next year. But thank you, everybody, for your hard work. And thank you, guys, for your hard work up here as well. So that's it. Sorry, Brian.
Hearing no other comments or questions. I would entertain a motion to approve the local current expense budget and capital outlay budget as presented. Have a motion to approve the budget as presented. Do I have a second to do that as well? And I have a second to approve the local expense budget and capital outlay budget as presented. Mr. Stout, would you please take a discussion?
Yes. When we began our budget discussions earlier this spring, my top priority was and remains supporting classroom instruction. Even in a challenging fiscal environment where we can't fund every instructional support we'd like, we must continue to prioritize those that directly impact students. Allow me, please, to clarify our current budget situation. At our last budget meeting, we faced a choice. Request more funding to support our priorities, make deeper budget cuts in order to preserve our priorities, or rely upon our fund balance, despite knowing we will need to rely even more heavily on our fund balance next year. Unfortunately, it appears the leadership of this board has chosen to delay tough decisions, pushing them to next fiscal year, which happens to be an election year. This is not the fiscally conservative choice and not the choice I can support. This budget includes only the increase that Dr. Miller and her staff were told the county would approve in March. Nothing more. Does not reflect what we truly need, but rather what the county has decided we are allowed to have. Contrary to some public remarks made by members of this board, Craven County Schools is not in debt, nor do we have a deficit. By law, we cannot spend beyond our means. However, just as was the case last year, and despite my best efforts and those of other board members to cut more than, this budget proposes spending more than we will receive from federal, state, and local sources. To make up the difference of over five million dollars, we must draw down our fund balance. If we continue to spend at this rate, we expect to have, as Mr. Lee has stated, less than five million left in the fund balance by the end of the next fiscal year. And as our auditor warned last fall, and as I said during last year's budget hearing, this approach is not sustainable. We saw this coming, which is why I advocated for staffing adjustments earlier. Every employee in our school system is vital. Custodians, cafeteria workers, teachers, bookkeepers, and more. With over fifteen-hundred employees, we are the second-largest employer in this county after Cherry Point. It's important to recognize that we've, what we've already cut in this budget. It eliminates several positions that principals came here and asked us to keep, such as instructional coaches and digital instructional technology facilitators, as well as beginning teacher mentors. These staff members have either returned to the classroom, retired, or taken on other roles. I want to highlight the critical work of our social workers, positions which our parents would probably have thought of as truancy officers. Every educator in this system knows that things have changed dramatically since COVID. Absenteeism is now at epidemic levels, even at the college level. Some have asked why county DSS social workers can't take over for those we've hired. Well, first, our social workers have specific DPI licenses, as Ms. Mack explained. Second, based on my meetings with DSS, their staff are already overwhelmed and struggle to keep up with intake calls from our schools as it is. They simply do not have the capacity to handle all the involuntary commitments, truancy court, or the other essential work our social workers are doing. Our social workers help keep students in school and ensure that we comply with truancy laws. Chronic absenteeism not only hurts our students' futures, but it also lowers our performance scores, making it harder to attract top students to our school system. Another challenge in this budget is the reduction in our low-wealth allotment. And as the CFO at DPI explained recently, quote, "The legislated low-wealth funding formula has been volatile post-COVID, as districts have had property reevaluations at different times. The formula calculates wealth relative to the state average in other districts. So when one's district property values increase before another's, it causes fluctuations." Well, for Craven County, we benefited from the formula this year. But next year, with new property values included, rising from eight billion dollars to eleven-point-three billion, we return to a more typical allocation. The county is collecting more from property taxes, seeing an eight percent increase from 2023 to 2024. But Craven County Schools does not receive a share of that increased revenue. As a result of the county not fully recognizing its true maintenance of effort, we lost half a million dollars in low-wealth funding. So I won't be supporting this budget.
Before I take this vote, I also have some comments about the budget that I'd like to make. The patience and the perseverance demonstrated by this board and our staff throughout this recent budget process has been nothing short of commendable. And I want to extend my sincere thanks to each one of you for your thoughtful engagement. It hasn't always been pleasant amongst us, but everyone has been engaged and given input. And I really appreciate that. I want to formally acknowledge the valid and ongoing concerns raised by board members and staff members and members of the community regarding our fund balance, our budgetary priorities, and the implications of the low-wealth funding contribution. These concerns are understandable, and they are important. And they are important for us to not lose sight of those things. But I want to assure everyone that these matters remain central to our fiscal deliberations. And I continue to have full confidence in Mr. Stout's capacity to identify and implement corrective strategies to place our financial position on a more sustainable trajectory. The proposed twenty-five-twenty-six budget presented this evening reflects the culmination of literally weeks of rigorous discussion and stakeholder input. And as I already mentioned, some of the highlights in that are that we are continuing in the twenty-five-twenty-six year to fund social workers, guidance counselors, nurses, and assistant principals, and school resource officers. And in the middle of all that, we have declining ADM, yet again, another year of that. And that has, as Mr. Lee explained and Ms. Lee explained, that has necessitated some reductions in our allotments. But at this time, we haven't had to implement any reductions in our people because our district and our school leadership is doing what they can do to manage other funding sources, such as Title I and restart funds and our local budget. So, but, so despite the fact that we have a four-and-a-half percent decline in our ADM again next year, we are bringing a request to the county commissioners for almost a ten percent increase in the local current expense budget. And there is no intention, Ms. Mason and others, for us to continue spending out the fund balance in the way that it has been in recent years. But, of course, the fund balance is there for us to utilize. And so I know Mr. Stout has already started. He's on day four or five here. And he's already started to identify some actionable areas for cost containment and some places for efficiency. So I have full confidence that we are on the right path there. And finally, I want to take a moment to express the gratitude of this board to our Craven County Commissioners for their steadfast support of public education. They have continued to invest in our schools and believe in our schools. And it is evident to us, not only through their financial contributions to us, but also their consistent oversight and engagement with us. And while sometimes they ask us questions that seem hard or challenging, we know that that is rooted in their shared commitment to accountability and excellence and transparency out of the school district and this county. And we cannot fault the county commissioners for that. At the end of each day and each process, they respect the deliberations of this board, and they support our decisions, and they reinforce their trust in us. And I'm very thankful that they have, even in this budget cycle, helped us in terms of having to extend some of our budget timeline and working with us. And we will, in a moment, take a vote to approve the budget as presented. And I'm hopeful that Friday morning, we have a meeting with the Board of Commissioners. They will reconvene their regular meeting Friday morning at eight-thirty to also hear and see this presentation, where we are asking them for a two-point-three-million-dollar increase in the local funding allotment for this year, which is a ten percent increase. So, Ms. Mason?
I would like to apologize for the board, to all the members of the staff who thought their jobs were in jeopardy or they were losing jobs. I think we could have handled it better, and I hope in the future, we handle it better. I don't think we realized what we were doing. And I formally do apologize to every staff member.
Are there any other budget-related comments? Yes, Ms. Gibbs?
I have stated from the beginning that if we're going to be cutting staff, and I have had word from the public that teachers are being told that they are not going to have a job next year due to lack of allotments or whatever, that some schools will not have art, and some schools will have art. Students need that. The teachers touch a hundred percent of the students, an art teacher does, a music teacher, a PE teacher. They need that in their day. I don't believe we should be adding new positions at this time, whatever they may be. I've always said that we need to start at the top. If there's gonna be a reduction in force, it should start at the central office. And I don't see any reduction in those numbers. So I just wanted to get that.
Thank you. Thank you. So we want to take the vote that, on the motion that was just presented to accept the local expense budget for twenty-five-twenty-six and the capital outlay budget as presented. I had that motion from Mr. Kirkman, and I had a second from Ms. Mason. Any discussion, additional discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Stout, would you please take a roll call vote?
No. No.
No.
Yes.
No. No.
Yes.
Motion failed.
Yes, Ms. Stacy? I move to adjourn. Do I have a...
Second.
Motion to adjourn, a second. Would you please take a roll call vote, Mr. Stout?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.